Okay, calling for Port One Nimi City Council Regular Meeting for Monday, November 16, 2015 to order. We'll have a flag salute followed by the inspiration by Mayor Pro Tem Doug Brice.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You know, I pray twice a day. I say praise at the dinner table and I say prayer before I go to bed every day. And my prayers have been fairly standard. I thank God for the blessings on my family and pray for his support and guidance. But the past few weeks, I've added two items to my prayers. I've asked that God grant the world leaders the knowledge, the will, and the ability to deal with the world threat of Islamic terrorism that's killing so many innocent people. And I've also added that he bless the city of Port One Nimi and help us get through our financial difficulties and our political difficulties. And those of you of faith, I ask that you add those two items into your prayers also. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. City Clerk, may we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Fig.
Here.
Councilmember Hensley.
Here.
Councilmember Sharkey.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Brice.
Here.
Mayor Shaw.
Here. We have the agenda in front of us.
Move to the second.
Okay, all of those, any discussion, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Standing. Okay. We have open forum then. We'll allocate 30 minutes at this time. And this is where the public can make comments on anything not adhering on the agenda. And each speaker has three minutes. So I do have one speaker card for Stephanie House. So Stephanie, join us at the podium, state your name and address.
My name is Stephanie House. I live at 432 Reed Way in Port One Nimi. Going through the budget that you all adopted last week, I noticed that the salary and benefits for the city manager represents $322,000 for a very small city. Labor negotiations are going on at the moment. The budget problems are primarily payroll-based and salaries and benefits and pension costs. You as a city council have a perfect opportunity at the moment. You've got an interim police chief, you've got an interim finance director. The deputy finance director has gone to assume to have an interim city manager. This is a time where you can show that you're serious about cutting unreasonable expenses out of the budget by setting reasonable salaries much lower than what they've grown to over the past several years. You can do this as a goodwill gesture to the unions, both the police union and the non-police union, showing that you're willing to set the example with the city managers in the contract negotiations so that you can get some negotiating benefits back from the city employees. Thank you. One thing I want to add as well, and it's actually an agenda item later, just with those four positions, if you drop it back to reasonable level, you could pay for this energy credit for the low-income households in Port One Nimi. There's no reason to cut that off from the citizens of the city. Thank you.
Thanks. I think there might be some misinformation that you have, but with regards to the department budget, it doesn't necessarily include the city manager. So just wanted to make sure that we get the information on it.
Ms. Mayor.
Yes.
If you look at the budget on the page for the city manager, that's for 95% of the full-time equivalent. So you have to take that number and divide it by the .95 to get the actual amount.
I understand what you're saying. Okay. Let's see. So if there aren't any other speaker cards, we move on to consent agenda.
Move to the second.
And...
I abstain.
Hensley, on, you were abstaining on which one? On all of them?
No, I just abstain on item 6B, the cash disbursement.
Okay. Are there any questions that you have for Steph at this point? Okay. All right, so there's a motion and a second. And any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Abstention?
Abstention.
Okay. And that's so noted. All right, so we move on to consent agenda. Item number seven, interim finance director. We have a presentation about the evaluation of low-income resident utility rate reduction program. So, Mr. Burrell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening to residents and councilmen. I have a short presentation on the low-income resident utility rate discount. As from the staff report, we read that the utility rates program started in 1994 and it was basically started to give low-income residents a break from the utility users' tax. It's a little history of it. Like I said, the discount program began in 1994. In 2007, the program expanded to all utility customers. And in fiscal year 1011, the city decided to advertise the program. And it was a real spike in that year. Program went from $69,000 to $146,000 after that particular advertisement. The discount rate decreased from 20% to 15% in January of 2012. The actual costs have increased by 174% from fiscal year '09 to '10 when volume metric rates went into effect to the projected fiscal year '15, '16 estimate of $192,000 for the care program. The general fund subsidy for '14-'15 was $118,910. 65% of the cost was in '14-'15. General fund projected subsidy for '15-'16 is $124,800.
Madam Mayor, a question. Can you go back to that slide?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead.
I don't understand your comment, general fund subsidy of $118,000, approximately 65% of cost in '14-'15. I don't understand that. What are you saying here?
What I'm saying was the total cost, if you, I was going to go get to that slide. If you look at the slide in...
Okay, if you're going to answer it later.
Yes, I am going to answer it.
Okay.
Okay. Move to the next slide, and that's the slide we're just coming up on. If you look at fiscal year '14-'15, what I was saying was $118,910 was 65% of the total cost for care of $183,000. So the green overlay shows of how, what the general fund is subsidizing for the care program. And for '15-'16, the general fund would be subsidizing even more of the care program.
So the red, does the red mean the interest rate?
The red basically shows the interest rate. And what staff is recommending is to either eliminate, to either eliminate the arse spend for care program, lower the discount rate from the current 15%, establish a fixed amount, and that fixed amount we are talking about would be the interest income we receive from the utility funds. Either on the first come, first served basis, some sort of lottery, or some other method that we can come up for care. Or we can leave it as is. Some of the stats on care below in the note is that the, again, the projected '15-'16 cost is $192,000. We have approximately 800 participants. It rises and it lowers, but the average is about 800. And the savings per participant, as is currently stated, is about $240 a year or about $20 a month. If the fixed amount, which in the current year would have been $65,000 is what we anticipate the interest to be in the utility funds, that number would be reduced from 800 to approximately 270 participants. That could be accommodated. And that is the end of the presentation. It's open for questions.
Okay, so are there any questions? So we do have one speaker card here. So let's go ahead and take the speaker. Joanne Harley, would you mind coming up? And you have three minutes to state your name and your address.
Joanne Harley, 160 East B Street, Port One Nimi. I'm a little discouraged that every time there is a deficit, it always seems to fall on the backs of the seniors. If the water department is having a deficit, why don't we just own up to it and raise the rates? Where does 800 participants amount to $192,000? That just doesn't, it doesn't add up to me. I don't see where that can, where the numbers add up that way. And to say you're going to drop the 800 participants down to 270, again, we're taking the seniors and hitting on them, first of all. I'm glad to see that you did realize there was a cutback from the 20% to 15%. In January of 2012, the utility users' tax was also reinstated, which that did not reflect. And so you've already, you know, lowered the care package from what the SoCal Es and the gas company allowed the seniors. If you have to do something, why don't you just reduce it to 10% instead of 15? And see if there isn't some other way to generate the funds you need to cover all of the participants. Thank you.
Thank you. And then I do have another speaker card for Cheryl Malone.
Cheryl Malone, 784 Allen New Circle. I know a person that had, a single person, income between $30,000 and $40,000, owned her own residence, participated in this utility discount, or whatever you call it, until a year ago when she moved out of the city. I know somebody else, subsidized housing, utility discount, takes lovely vacations every year. The system is flawed. People are getting, taking advantage of it that have no business, and there seems to be no check on it. So unless you can guarantee that these people really do qualify and aren't lying on their applications or whatever they do, it's not fair to the rest of us that paid the tax. Thank you.
Okay, so are there any questions for Steph? Yes, Councilmember Sharkey.
Yeah, this is a program that I've championed over the years, and it was always intended to run off the interest from investment, interest rates aren't what they used to be, as we all know. And we tied the eligibility to the SCE standard. And the question, the first question is, how robust is their vetting process for ascertaining eligibility?
Honestly, I don't know. We hear some of the same stories that came up tonight, that there are people on the program that shouldn't be, that don't qualify. We do not have the interim staff or expertise to go through the number of applications we would get. And that's part of the reason we use the SCE vetting program. It's my understanding that they don't go through 100% of the applications. They do, like you would do in an audit, they test. And they, every year, they're testing and they're sampling to see if there are people who really don't qualify. And the people I talk to there, they say if they find that their sample yields a result that higher percentage than they would allow, then they expand, they expand their test. But that's the way it comes about. And, you know, with the number of applicants you get, you're not going to get 100% screen.
And I know a few years ago, we started looking at this, and it's a question I raised actually, that people were on for life, whether the circumstances changed or not. We did, we did require a re-implication process, that's every year, correct?
Correct, yeah.
So that helps. This is a very, very tough situation for us. If we went to a 10%, that would bring us down to about, an estimated $90,000, which is still $3,000 over our interest receipts. I'm not sure how the process would work if we were to count the amount, 270 participants that first come, first served, and, you know, that raises a whole lot of equity problems, I think, in my mind. But I'm not sure what else we can do. I mean, we can subsidize it to some small degree and, you know, until the interest rates come back, I suppose. But I don't see any way that we can continue subsidizing it to the level that we are now.
Is that a question?
No, it's okay.
By Mike?
Councilmember Fig.
I noticed one of your slides, Val, that talked about an increase of about 174% in the care cost from fiscal year '09 to '10. Now, coincidentally, that's about the amount of the rate increases that I've researched over the same period of time when it comes to our sewer water trash bills. So what I look at here is that we're throwing money at the symptoms of a problem, not getting to the cause, which is the affordability of the rates themselves. So what I would advocate for is to eliminate the program, take those savings, conduct an outside independent audit of our utility rates to find a way to reduce the cost at the source, rather than having to subsidize the expense that people can't afford. That would be my recommendation. I'll be glad to make that as a motion if somebody would care to second it.
Yes, Mayor Pro Tem Brice.
I think we have, we're probably going to do a rate study anyway, are we not?
For water, as I understand it. I don't know about the other utilities.
A comment?
Yes, Mayor Pro Tem Brice.
When we looked at this back in 2012, the city was offering 20%. And if memory serves me correctly, we did a survey of the other cities. Some cities didn't have this program at all. Most of the cities were contributing 5% to 8% to the disadvantaged. And Port One Nimi was by far the highest contributor to this program at 20%. We lowered it to 15% at that time. I would be in favor of lowering this to 10%. And that would save the staff, the hassle of any kind of lottery or any kind of additional record-keeping. And it would bring the amount that the city contributes towards the disadvantaged very close to what our interest rate income is in the water fund. I think there's, it'd be somewhere about $3,000 or $4,000 more than what our interest rate is. Am I on target?
A little bit off, to be more like about $30,000.
I'm sorry?
Be more like about $30,000.
$30,000 over our interest?
Yes.
Well, if we lowered it to like 8%, which is a lot of what other cities are doing.
Yeah, that's pretty close, but I think to get it down to what our interest actually is, it would be about 5%.
5%? Okay, well then, to me, that seems like the appropriate thing to do. I don't want to eliminate the program totally. If interest rates go back up, maybe we can look at increasing it back. So I would make a motion that we lower the discount rate to 5%, which would equal the amount of money the city earns on its interest from the water utility fund and kind of split the babies, so to speak. That would be my motion.
Second.
Okay, so yes, discussion, yes. Councilmember Hensley.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Mayor. This is a real quandary. The problem is that we have a lot of low-income people, senior citizens, handicapped people, that 5% would probably knock them down to about $5 a month discount. It was $20 a month at the present time. Mr. Fig brought up something here, is that we seem to have an important, high rate of our utilities. Somehow or another, I think we could, excuse me, come into some sort of equitable balance in between. 10% is only about $10 a month, if you want to understand. And some of these people are really desperate. Granted, there's probably some people who are floating in the system, and maybe we need to figure out some way to vet this out. But I know there's a lot of seniors in this community, particularly in the community that I live, that are really struggling just to get on by, just to pay their homeowners' association fees. So I don't know the answer, but I kind of like the combination of Mr. Fig and idea of checking out the utility rates and how can we have such high rates? And 10% of it has to be done. But I stand for those people who are seniors and are really hurting financially. In other words, what it's going to do is start cutting out, then buying some of their medications. Thank you.
So I do recall when we made that change back in 2012, adjusted, because we had seen some actuals that had increased it at that point. So we'll thank you, Mr. Burrell, for your presentation. So there's a motion and a second. Yes. Yes. Mayor Pro Tem Brice.
Can you put your calculator hat on and come up with a close percentage of what it would be if the subsidy was $10 a month, what the deficit would be, instead of $20 a month per participant, the city subsidies, $10 a month? Do you know what the impact that would have on the...
Couldn't give you an exact...
Half?
Could be half of that.
Half of 192?
No, this, well, we're getting about 65 in interest. So it would be half of that $125,000 that was subsidized.
It'd be half of 125, so it would be 70?
No, it'd be less than that. It would be less than that, about 62.5 would be subsidized.
So somewhere around $60,000, right. So we'd go from, we'd go from $125 to 65 deficit on the general fund?
On the general fund, yes.
You're saying if we had it to $10?
Right. Right now, the participants are saving, saving about $20 per month on the utility bill. If we cut that in half to $10 a month, we could still have about $60,000 deficit.
Yes.
Well, I would like to change my motion, because the feds are talking about raising the interest rate. And instead of hitting the participants hard all at once, let's take a bite of it now and then take a look at it maybe next year. So I would change my motion to reducing the savings per customer from $20 a month down to $10 a month. Kind of split, split the issue.
So...
That's acceptable.
Okay, so...
If I could just say something?
Yes.
The $20 is an average. It's not a flat dollar amount. So it's based on a percentage, so we have to adjust the percentage accordingly.
Which would be whatever you said a minute ago?
Yeah, it would be somewhere around 2%.
So the percentage would then change to maybe about 7.5% or so?
It would change a little higher than that. We split it in half, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Well, perhaps a 15%?
Right. About 7.5, you're right.
Yeah, that would be my motion.
So before clarification, I mean, the intent is to establish a percentage rate that is equivalent to a $10 average?
Yes.
Okay, so that was a motion, and you're okay with the change in the motion?
That's acceptable.
Okay. So any discussion? Yes, Councilmember Hensley.
I can understand the importance of this for the city. But I can understand the importance of the public and the low-income and the seniors. And on the other hand, we have Mr. or Councilman Fig over here telling us that our utility rates are kind of high. It seems like we should make some cross-adjustment to our utility rates, too. We have some sort of tax measure. I think we could bring in about $1.2 million a year on the utility taxes. Is that correct? $1.6 mil. I don't feel comfortable with it without either the utility tax or the readjusting the rates.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
No.
No.
Okay, so majority, 3-2. So we then move on that. Thank you, Mr. Burrell, for your presentation. All right. So we are on item number eight, and it was my request to put into the agenda the Council Norms of Operations. This was, there's a purpose here, but also it came out of the team building that took place at the end of October. And I don't know if, you know, the audience has seen this. I know that we on the council have seen it all before. It's a document that is actually a living, breathing document. The last time it was, I believe it was changed was February 2001, maybe Councilmember Sharkey was on the, on the council at that time. And, you know, as I was reflecting on this on the way over to the meeting, I thought to myself... to myself, you know, when my kids were in school, they went to a private school, both grade school as well as high school. The kids, as they started out each year, they actually had to sign a contract of their, you know, how they were going to obey, what the rules of the road were for that year, whether it was high school, what they were going to abide by. It also had some other things, most currently, about their use of Internet at the school and things like that. So now I kind of reflected back on, you know, when somebody starts something new, that usually it is something that they have to go through, whether it's a contract or just their norms of operation or what's going to be acceptable. So with this, you know, as you could see here, there's purpose called out. The applicability is both to the elected officials and the employees of the city. And there's section that talks about council member meetings and what we're going to abide by. There's section number two, city council relations with city staff. And, you know, it's itemized from A through I. And then there's also the council, section three, council relationship with city commissions and committees and other agencies and groups. Section four is the handling of litigation and confidential information. Section five talks about city council reorganization. And section six, conflict with municipal code. And so these are all things that have been vetted out, that we all should abide by. I know several items have come up, whether it was at the team building or in other circumstances. But I'm looking to really work diligently for this next, for these next couple of months to see what other cities have and to craft something that may be much more applicable to the city of Port Juaniemi. So I just wanted to put it out there. Nothing to really move on tonight. It was just reflecting back on that we have rules of the road when it comes to your electors here in the city, as well as all the employees here. And we hope that everyone abides by every single one of these items. Some of the things are that we addressed at team building was that we say what should happen, but maybe in certain instances, we should reflect on if that doesn't happen, then what are the ramifications? You know, what are the conditions that would then apply if a certain member, maybe of the council or employee, doesn't abide by these rules? What would happen? So there would be benefits to working this out, but also then consequences if the items aren't followed. So any input from anyone else on the dies? All right, so we'll continue working on this, but at least this is where we start. And I do have two speaker fronts for A. So we'll start with Stephanie House, followed by Stephen Gama.
My name is Stephanie House, and I live at 432 Reed Way. And when I was reading through this, I looked at the section five, number B, number A, number B, with each December, the council reorganizes the positions and elects a mayor and a mayor pro tempore. And I've thought about this a lot. And I think the council ought to make a reflection that no one with less than one year of time remaining in their elected term should be elected as either the mayor or the mayor pro tempore. So that they're not trying to run for reelection while they're serving in that official capacity. And I think that's something that might take some of the politics out of the relationship among the five council members. And I think it could go a long ways to trying to help solve the three versus two issue. So that's a recommendation that I would love to make. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And then Stephen Gama.
Stephen Gama, 435 San Miguel Circle. I didn't get a chance to look at the norms. I don't know if they're posted back there. I wanted to take a look at them, but anyways, I think that's good. Get it on the table, have a public discussion of it. Unfortunately, I didn't get to review it. In regards to the rates and that we just talked about water, I live at Surfside Village, and we cut back our water usage quite a bit, to the point where our lawns were turning brown. Friends of mine would come over and they would make a comment, there's no drought in Miranda Park, because Miranda Park was always very green and watered very nicely, in fact, probably even overwatered. So I started thinking, like, does the city get a water bill? Does the city get one water bill type of one liter? Or do you have several water bills for this building, for the park, for the... Just kind of interested in how that works. Perhaps if the city doesn't get a water bill like the rest of us, maybe it should. Last week, Councilmember Breeze referenced the city of Oxnard, and I have a little joke I'd like to tell. Do you know how you're in the city of Oxnard? The road turns bad. And that's really good for the city of Juaniemi, because that means our roads are in excellent shape. And you do a really good job taking care of our roads. But at the same time, our roads are superior to that of the city of Oxnard. So perhaps there's some savings that could be taken into account in terms of yearly maintenance fees for roads and stuff. I appreciate Mayor Protimbres' comments tonight. It seems like you're all starting to behave like a friend of the city, which is nice. And I'd just like to encourage you all to continue to work together, have a spirited discussion, take your votes, move on respectfully, without rancor. And there was a guy named Tim Flynn over at the city of Oxnard, and he was a minority for a very long time. And I don't recall him ever getting nasty or having problems like we've seen here. But I do know that he's now the mayor. And I'd just like to encourage everybody to continue to work positively for the benefit of the city, to be transparent. And on this water issue, I'm still, I'm just trying to wonder, is Miranda Park a part of the drought? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so...
And Mayor, would you make a comment?
Yes, Mayor Protimbres.
We did reduce the street maintenance budget in the upcoming, the amount of money for street maintenance in the upcoming budget. The city does receive a water bill for its water usage. And I don't know how to answer the one regarding Miranda Park. I don't know what the watering schedule is.
Really good.
Okay. So moving on to council member reports, comments, and requests for future agenda items. I don't remember mine. Is any of it happening to report or coming up? Okay, Mayor Protimbres.
I attended the Oxnard Harbor District's President's Dinner the other night. The theme was community unity. And it was an absolutely wonderful event. There was, I think, 300 or so people there. One of the main speakers was Travis Newton, the grandson of Thomas Bard. He talked about the formation of the harbor, the building of the harbor, and the contributions that the Bard family made to the community. I enjoyed it very much. I was glad to be there. Also, this past weekend, Dr. Beverly Kelly gave a talk at the museum sponsored by Larry Downing. It was a wonderful talk. As you know, Beverly Kelly had a column in the newspaper for many, many years in The Star. She did over 500 articles. And she took the 30 or so of her articles that were pertinent to Port Juaniemi and talked briefly about each one of them. It included the sand wall and different community issues. I thought her talk was very nice, and it was well-attended, and I was happy to be there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Hansley.
Madam Mayor, thank you. On November the 10th, at 9:30 a.m., at Wood Beach Elementary School, Petron's Day ceremony, there was no cost. Excellent ceremony, and they had the kids take a read down to the beach at the end of it, and a lot of voluntary people showed up. November the 12th, 9:30, friends of the Bard Mansion Foundation Board of Directors presented a draft flyer for the Bard Holiday Celebration. I'm a paid member of the Bard Foundation, so there's no fee. Also, on November the 12th, at 11:30, the Navy League Lunch honored the 240th United States Marine Corps birthday in recognition of the Marine of the Year. And I believe the city paid a fee of about $35. And Councilman Doug Breeze presented an award to the outstanding Marine. Also, on November the 12th, at 5 p.m., the Port Juaniemi's Annual President's Dinner in appreciation of firms and cities and people related. Report at the end of the year for me personally, because I estimate it to be about $45 as comp and appreciation, so that's going to be in my fiscal report. Also, on November the 13th, 6 p.m., the Channel Counties Division of the League of California Cities, the topic was legislative update, and the keynote speaker was Assemblywoman Jackie Irwin from the Port Juaniemi District. Very, very interesting what's going on. She gave the expression, when she was a city councilwoman in Thousand Oaks, it's kind of like a part-time job. They go in and get their book on Thursday, they kind of mull it over, do some little studies, call staff, and then they're gay for the city councilman. Here, she gets on the 8 o'clock flight out of Burbank, flies up to Sacramento, spends the week up there, and goes whirlwind around day and night practically. And 1,300 bills may be floating through there at any given time. And she says, it is such a huge amount of material to sort, it's almost impossible. She has to reach out to her staff to do it. So if anybody wants to have a go-crazy job, I suppose that's a good one. Run for the state assembly. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
So I have a couple of things. So I also was at the Oxnard Harbor District Dinner. And one of the guest speakers as well was a young gentleman who was representing the ports of Baja California. So he's based out of, I believe, Ensenada. But he talked about the reality of working alongside with them. And so I think the Port Juaniemi has actually reached out, and there was a trip that some of the commissioners and staff took a few weeks back down to Ensenada. But this gentleman mentioned that there were 900 maquiladoras, or manufacturing plants, in and around the Juana and Ensenada, and they're from companies all over the world. So it's not just American companies that manufacture in the Baja California area, but folks from Asia and throughout the other parts of the world. So it's really kind of a fascinating story about looking at avenues for growth, but also to enhancement, and taking a look at maybe some best practices of what other ports do. So it was good to see him there as well. I also then attended the League of California Cities Dinner. And what the league is, is that we belong to the Channel Counties League. It goes all the way from Arroyo Grande up in, up north in San Luis Obispo, and it goes all the way down then to Thousand Oaks and Simi Valley. And so these dinners happen quarterly, so it's a great opportunity for cities to come together and to meet other members of their city council and staff. And we usually have some great speakers, like Assemblywoman Jackie Irwin was our speaker. The last meeting I went to was in Santa Maria, and one of our state representatives was there. And so he talked about then the craziness of what goes on in Sacramento. But these are always places to meet others, to hear about what's going on in Sacramento. And then the league staff actually updates us on bills that are coming through, that they're working either for or against, based on what the value is, the value proposition, and what it then means for the cities. The League of California Cities is all about protecting the cities and the revenue that goes to the city. And so we don't like when Sacramento then grabs into our budget to take something. But it really is a worthwhile organization, and we've been part of it. So there's a conference that happens once a year, and it goes between North and South California. And it's a really valuable organization that we belong to. So that's a little bit of background about the league. And then the last event I attended this weekend, it was three nights of events, but the last one was the big, wonderful gala that the Oxnard and Port Juaniemi Boys and Girls Club puts together. It's really well-attended. They raise over $300,000 in each of these galas every year. And one of the big news items about that is that today was a soft opening for the Boys and Girls Club. It was open for boys and girls to drop in. And the big, then, grand reopening will be sometime early next month.
December 2.
December 10, okay. So we look forward then to having them back in the community to help our kids, and they were all very much looking forward to that. So that was kind of the talk of the dinner table that I was at on Saturday. But certainly, that's a well-attended program, and the kids they helped were absolutely fabulous. Many of them show up and sing during dinner. But we also have the girl of the, not the girl of the year, the Boys and Girls Girl of the Year come out and speak and talk about how this involvement with the Boys and Girls Club has really transformed her life. She talked about how when she was 11, her whole life changed because her dad was sent to prison, and her family then moved out here to Los Angeles. And then the grandmother that they lived with a few months later died, so then they had to move up to Oxnard. And she was told about the Boys and Girls Club, and from that point forward, she joined. And she was celebrating on Saturday, because she's actually going to be at a university here in the upcoming spring. And so it's a good news story, and I believe we all reflected then on those people that touched our lives when we were younger. But certainly, going forward, we'll have the Boys and Girls Club then open their doors and be available for the kids of our community. All right, I do have one other thing for this portion of the agenda. And I want to suggest that there might be a special meeting that we call for city council on November 30th. So just wanted to make everyone aware that that might be upcoming on our calendar.
By Mike?
Yes.
And the reason for that?
Councilmember Figg. It will be reflected from closed session, but I just wanted to put that on to, put that on to this meeting so that it's reflected on to our minutes. Okay, so we move on then to item number 10, closed session. Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. With regard to closed session, please note that item 10B as an employee has been removed from the agenda. So what remains are items number 10A, which is Conference with Labor Negotiators Pursued to Government Code, Section 54957.6. The labor negotiators were previously appointed in an open session. They are the city manager, the deputy city manager, and special counsel. The employee organizations are SEIU, PHPOA, and the Unrepresented Unit. Also, remaining is item 10C on the agenda, which is Public Employment and Employee Appointment Pursued to Government Code, Section 54957, title city manager. If there are any items that come out of those closed sessions, we will announce it after the closed session occurs.
Okay. So we'll move on into closed session. So with regards to this, we'll adjourn to the next regular meeting to be held December 7th, possibly a special meeting on the 30th at 6:30 here at council chambers. Thank you.